We have five members of the commission, like the mayor is not determined.
The council meeting of February twentieth will come to order. Would ask that all electronic devices be turned off or silenced and if you'd please stand to honor God and country. And if you'd bow your heads. Father, you know our nation, our state was rocked last week. We lift our neighbors in Broward County. We lift the city of Parkland, a city about the same size as Temple Terrace. Father, we humbly submit, we know there are no laws, ordinances, or resolutions to prevent the evil we witness perpetrated. It's not powers or principalities that can shift behavior, it's you. We pray for hearts to be open to the greatest power, that you exhibit to us all that of love. May we soberly, humbly, and with love serve those in our city. Amen. We will now pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there are persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, forms are available in the back of the room and may be turned into the city clerk to your right. Strategic Advisory Committee appointments. The Strategic Advisory Committee of the Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club will have two council members appointed, one being a member of the Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club's general membership with financial indoor business experience, and the other a city resident. We have four applications for city resident positions, Jack Ritter, Lynn Boswell, Scott Davies, Amina Spahig, Spah- Sabin, excuse me, and the city received four applications for Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club's general membership with financial or business experience, Don Stats, Gil Schisler, Bob Hogan, and John Straub. Are there applicants who would like to address the council who are present?
When the time is right, yes ma'am. I want to address the council.
I think he's talking about items not on the agenda.
Are there any from the advisory council appointments? Seeing none, each council member has a ballot to vote for their top candidates for each category. As I understand from a late afternoon email, at least one person must have the finance and business background, but if council members choose to appoint two from that background, that is appropriate, as all our city residents. And if you'll complete your ballots and pass them down to the clerk, please. And the city would like to thank all eight individuals who expressed interest in serving on this committee. Our clerk will tally the ballots. The members receiving the highest vote tallies are Gil Schisler and Don Stats. I would ask for a motion to approve these appointments to our Strategic Advisory Committee.
Move to approve the appointments to the Strategic Advisory Committee?
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion carries. We'd like to thank Don Stats, Gil Schisler. Congratulations, and we thank you for your service to our community. Council, if the minutes of February sixth, twenty eighteen, city council are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Minutes are approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments. Individual members of the public who are present in the audience may designate in writing a representative spokesperson to speak on their behalf and thereby relinquish their time to the spokesperson. The spokesperson will be allowed to speak for one minute for each designation up to a maximum of ten minutes. The first person to speak this evening is John Noonan. And Mr. Noonan, as you come forward, if you'd please state your name and city of residence.
Hi, I'm John D. Noonan, and I live at three oh five South Glen Arvin Avenue here in Temple Terrace. I apologize in advance for bringing a complaint to you. Let me preface my complaint by saying that I have to be out of Temple Terrace weeks, months at a time because I supervise construction and repair on property we own in the state of Michigan. And we pay heavy taxes there and have no voice and no vote there, of course, because this is our legal residence here in Temple Terrace. So when I'm there, I make it a point to go to the meetings of the little village council. It's a town of four hundred fifty people at most. And I'm amazed at the amount of information that the village treasurer there packs into her monthly reports about the finances of that village. In fact, though you would probably look down your noses at her because she has no education and she hasn't any of the high positions that many of you have had, she puts you all to shame, I'm sorry to say. I found this statement in the minutes that you just approved seconds ago about the finances of the city, meeting of February sixth, twenty eighteen, item nine, the city manager said he provided council with information on the quarterly financials. That's it, all right? That doesn't make the financial record of the city a public record. In fact, it hides the records of the city. You cannot have government in the sunshine in the city of Temple Terrace if you have the finances in the shadows. I urgently request that you make it your policy to have the city's checking accounts, the city's savings accounts, the city's investments in short-term bonds or treasury notes that you park money in, the city's sinking fund, the city's debt reduction month by month, a part of the videotape record and a part of the minutes, the printed record. Because you do not even advise the public, so far as I can tell, I haven't found in the lobby of this building the required legal notice where citizens are to go to get public records. And the only way a citizen would have of finding out what those financials that the city manager spoke about actually are is to make a public records request. And citizens shouldn't have to do that. Some are physically unable to do it, some are unwilling to do it. Florida statutes one nineteen makes it clear that transparency, sunshine, whatever you want to call it, the public's right to know, those are the intent and the spirit of Florida law. And I don't think you are living up to the spirit at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan.
Thank you very much.
Andrea McClellan, M V Products, eighty-six oh one Harney Road in Temple Terrace. To lighten the mood a little, I am here to remind everybody that this Friday is Farm Night Barbecue in Temple Terrace. At our farm and our facility, at the intersection of Davis and Harney Roads, at five thirty, we will open our gates to everyone for a fun evening of barbecue, hayride, bonfire, ice cream, strawberry shortcake, agriculture activities for kids, teaching them how to make butter out of cream, and just a fun evening, all the while supporting a new Boys and Girls Club chapter here in the city. So I just wanted to remind everyone, this Friday, don't forget to get your tickets in advance to save five dollars on adult tickets and kids' tickets. Twenty-five dollars for adults, ten dollars for kids in advance. At the door, there'll be thirty dollars and fifteen dollars. So get your tickets in advance. You can get them anywhere throughout the city, City Hall, the Chamber, you can get them at our facility, or you can get them online at Eventbrite. And I just wanted to show everybody something pretty cool. So Mid-Florida Tree, who obviously does tree work, supplied us with these beautiful wooden planks. We had them engraved with the Farm Night Barbecue logo, the Fresh From Florida logo, which is our title sponsor, and also the Boys and Girls Club logo. So these will adorn our tables as centerpieces, and we will also be auctioning them off or having them for sale for about twenty dollars a piece. So all of those profits, again, will go toward the Boys and Girls Club. So please get your tickets in advance and come out and have a good time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your continued support of our city. Mr. Ralph Leptin.
I'm not sure that this is the time for it. This has to do with the changing the zoning on the bowling alley. Should we do that now, or does that come later?
That will be on the agenda, Mr. Leptin. Yes, thank you.
So sit down, right?
Are there others to address items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on. Consent agenda. City Manager Stevenson will explain the item listed on the consent agenda. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda has one item on it this evening, and this fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget includes funds for the scheduled replacement of a nineteen ninety-four white Freightliner roll-off refuse vehicle in our sanitation department. Research indicates that the most cost-effective method to purchase this vehicle is through the Florida Sheriff's Association bid, F S H, F A F S A seventeen dash V E H fifteen point zero. The roll-off vehicle, the roll-off fleet will retain in its fleet a two thousand two and a two thousand ten conventional-style cabs that we have in our fleet. The nineteen ninety-four that we're replacing will be sold online in an auction to the highest bidder. Staff has indicated that this type and age of vehicle return the most proceeds when disposed of in this faction. The budget and funds for the expenditure of one hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars has been allocated in account four eight zero dash two oh three two dash five three four point six four dash one two. It's recommended the city council adopt a resolution to purchase this two thousand eighteen Mack roll-off refuse truck for the one hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars from Next Tran Truck Center here through the Florida Association bid process allocating this purchase to that account referenced before. Staff recommends approval of the purchase.
Are there any persons from the public who would like to address counsel on this
Good evening, council. Candace Reed, five four one zero River Hills Drive. I just have a quick question. I'm not sure why are we doing these older trucks, or I guess the older version of these trucks, because you have the electric model, or not electric, but the arm model in Tampa, where we've all been distributed trashcans. Like when I lived in Tampa, you get a regular trashcan and a recycle bin, and it's just this arm here. Have we looked deep enough that this is the best solution for Temple Terrace? At some point, I feel like we need to be thinking a little bit more progressive and want to get into this trash truck situation. And to second the previous speaker, with the budget, how do you know that this is the most cost-effective situation for the trash trucks? But that's it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, if the consent agenda is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the item on the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda, consisting of resolution approving the purchase of a two thousand eighteen Mack M R U six one three roll-off refuse truck.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Ross.
Just to clarify, this is for a roll-off dumpster picking-up truck. This is not the garbage truck that picks up the residential trash. This is for a roll-off. And it's being bought on the Sheriff's Association bid, so it's already been put out for statewide bids, so that's how we know it's the best deal.
Thank you.
Just to clarify.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Is there any further discussion? If you're ready for the vote, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we will open the public hearing. It will be our first public hearing and reading of an ordinance to adopt, R Z P number seventeen dash fifteen, Paradigm Sports Corporation. If the city clerk would swear in all persons who will be testifying on this ordinance. Thank you. City council members, please disclose any oral or written ex parte communications with the applicant or citizens regarding this matter.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I had a conversation with one of the neighbors.
Thank you very much. Community Development Director Amir Anisi will present.
Good evening, Amir Anisi, Community Development Director. Before I start my presentation, I would like to hand out a waiver, a seven waiver applicant requested and is not on the staff report. On under exhibit D, the staff report, the waivers is just, is two waivers instead of seven waivers. So this is oversight in our part. Michael, you know, passing away, and then I inherited his files, putting these files together, a lot of works. And again, applicants submit the conceptual plan a couple of times back in November, late December, January. So the latest version indicate is a seven waivers instead of two. So I would like to be transparent and...
Madam Mayor, if I can kind of help this along here.
Mr. Stevenson, yes.
With Michael's passing, we kind of inherited this file from Michael, sort of half-done, if you would. And with his unfortunate passing, we were able to try to keep this on schedule. Obviously, it had already been advertised. We'd like to keep it on schedule so that we don't lose that advertising process, if you would. The staff report only listed two waivers. Obviously, Michael never finished that. The site plan that was submitted to staff and community development actually listed out those seven waivers, but I doubt very seriously that anybody picked it up with the way of transmitting some of this information. It gets a little small. So I had requested that Mr. Anisi be transparent with us, that we, in fact, recognize that they submitted seven waivers, although there were only two listed on the staff report.
Thank you, City Manager Stevenson, and thank you, Mr. Anisi. And it was for citizens who are with us this evening or viewing these proceedings. We did lose a staff member, and other staff members have stepped in to the gap, and I appreciate you being so diligent as you reviewed the files and bring them to us this evening. Mr. Anisi.
R P Z seven fifteen, rezoning. This is the first public hearing and reading. Owner applicant is Paradigm Sport Complex. Applicant agent is Mazer Consulting P A. The background information, the location is fifty-three oh nine, fifty-three eleven, fifty-three thirteen East Bush Boulevard, eighty-three, eighty-five thirty-seven, eighty-five thirty-nine, Overlook Drive. Zoning request is C G and R ten to P D with conceptual plan. The total acres is three point six seven plus and minus. Existing use is one-story bowling alley and a skating rink. Proposed use, one oh five five six three self-storage facility, up to ninety-nine oh six three square foot. We had six hundred forty-five unit under the existing one-story building. We have fifty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-eight square foot. On the phase two of this conceptual plan, we will have new two-story self-storage building with thirty-nine nine thirty-five square foot. Within that space, we will have an office building of two thousand six hundred one seventeen square foot. Part of existing buildings will be office, and on the front section, which is on the phase three, we will have a retail restaurant sixty-five hundred square foot. And the new building and retail will be close to Bush Boulevard. This is the conceptual plan. As you see, the existing building will be in phase one, and the new two-story close to Overlook Drive will be phase two, and the retail close to Bush Boulevard will be phase three. So they're going to break it down to three phases. As you see, the total square footage for phase one will be fifty-nine one twenty-five with two thousand six hundred one seven square foot of offices. The retail will be sixty-five and also phase two, which is the second-story portion of it, which be thirty-nine nine thirty-five. These are the elevation provided by the applicant. We have north elevation, we have south elevations. This is just a rendering. This is just conceptual, you know, plan provided. Oh, sorry. And we have west elevation, we have east elevation. We have three conditions of approval. Approve used and phasing. The second one would be a site development standard. The third would be coordination for infrastructure improvement. And again, these are the seven waivers requested by the applicant, and is not on a staff report. On the last page of a staff report, under exhibit D, is only listed two waivers, is not listed the seven waivers. And we will make the staff report updated for the next hearing. Will be on March sixth, the second public hearing. Planning Commission found request consistent with comprehensive plan. We will have the second public hearing on March sixth. Staff recommend council approve ordinance fourteen forty-six to adopt rezoning with condition of approval.
Mr. Anisi, did the plan, did their view on the consistent, that the plan was consistent with the comprehensive plan include the seven waivers?
Absolutely. They did that, yes.
I would ask if the applicant would like to present to council at this time?
I think we do have some presentation boards that we could put on easels, and they're So, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. For the record, my name is Ty Maxey. I'm with Mazer Consulting Planner. With me is our project team. I have Park Myers, who is the project's developer, Mike Charles, the property owner, Jesse Shell, and Fadi Garcia, who are our project architects, and Dwayne Milford, our civil engineer. Mr. Anisi did a great job, of course, of summarizing the project details, but I do have some additional points that I'd like to highlight with regard to this proposed rezoning. There we go. That's the photographs of the existing building. I'm sure you're all familiar with this existing bowling alley and skating rink building, the blue and red, bright building. So this is the project that we are proposing to redevelop. And if I can, oops. Oh, wait. Oh, I see. Let me get to the site plan. So the proposed development includes converting the existing skating rink and bowling alley into a state-of-the-art, climate-controlled, self-storage facility. In addition, we're proposing a two-story, climate-controlled, self-storage structure, which is to the west of the existing structure. So that'll be a new two-story structure. All of the storage units are internal to the buildings. There is no exterior access, kind of like the first-generational self-storage or mini warehouse that you might be familiar with. This type of facility does not have that roll-up door, exterior access. All the units are internal to the structure. The existing structure will also house about twenty-six hundred square feet of professional office space that'll be leasable for professional office, business offices. The project also includes an out parcel up along Bush Boulevard that's suitable for restaurant or retail use. There's ample parking throughout the site and significant landscaping improvements from what is there today, including buffers around the perimeter. An existing solid six-foot masonry wall, as well as a buffer in excess of about thirty feet, thirty-five feet wide, is proposed along Overlook Drive. So we were very sensitive to the residential local street of Overlook Drive, so we don't have any access points onto Overlook Drive other than a emergency-only access at the rear of the property. But we did provide a buffer in excess of about thirty-five feet, as well as no activity basically taking place along Overlook Drive. So all of the activity is focused toward Bush Boulevard and the parking area in front of the existing structure. The existing primary entrance is off of Bush Boulevard, and it will serve both the self-storage facility and the out parcel. The out parcel is not proposed to have any additional access on The out parcel is not proposed to have any additional access onto Bush Boulevard. So the out parcel's access will be internal to the site. The architectural design approach for the project. There we go. Is, was one to enhance the Temple Terrace neighborhood by improving the existing site and creating a cohesive development through the use of various architectural elements that generate an overall identity. The north elevation is the most prominent with visibility from Bush Boulevard. A tower-like element creates a focal point for the main entrance and establishes hierarchy among the building mass. Articulated windows and metal awnings provide an organized rhythm along the facade and a comfortable scale for pedestrians. The material palette pulls from the surrounding area consisting of stucco, brick, and metal detailing in earth-ton colors. As most of you probably know, self-storage use is a very low-traffic generator and it's certainly a much-needed service here in Temple Terrace. This would be your first self-storage facility within the city limits. We took a look, look at the existing and future economic value of this project for the city in 2017. And I do have a board. I don't have it up here, but. So in 2017, the property had an assessed value of approximately 1.1 million with just over $25,000 in property taxes last year. It's estimated that upon build-out, the, the property value will increase to over $6 million with an annual tax payment of approximately $129,000. Spread that out over 10 years and that's in excess of, of 1.3 million dollars. To facilitate the effective reuse and redevelopment of this site and especially the structure that's on the site, we have asked, have, have had to ask for waivers from your code, which are the seven waivers that are listed. I'd be happy to go through those if you have any questions, but otherwise I'll, I'll move forward. We worked with your Economic Development Director, Marty Hudson, your previous Economic Development Director for many, for about a year on this project. We, we actually participated in monthly workshops with Mr. Hudson to come together, come together to form a draft overlay new code for this section of the city. Although the draft code regulations were created as a result of the workshops and have not been formally reviewed or adopted by the city, this site plan and the proposed project actually complies with all of those code regulations that were in draft form. I just, of course, you know, sincerely wanted to thank your staff for their assistance and especially recognize Mike Kokowski. He had worked with us for about a year and a half on this project, was always helpful. And we certainly appreciate, you know, all of his help and, and offer our condolences. As Mr. Anisi stated, the proposed PD rezoning is consistent with your comprehensive plan. We have received a formal recommendation of consistency from the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. We've also received a recommendation of approval from your staff. And with that, we would respectfully request your approval.
I would ask if council has questions of staff or the applicant? Councilman Pagorlik.
Thank you. First, you got three, so please bear with me. One is, I'd like to take you up on your offer and walk us through the seven variances.
Sure.
And then I'd like to hear from staff on, on.
Put that down.
Why they, they think they're okay. That's my first question.
So I'm guessing you probably have them in the same order that they're listed on our site plan. The first waiver is to the Spanish Renaissance revival or Mediterranean revival architectural style. With the reuse of this building, it's kind of been difficult to comply with that architectural style. And also, we wanted to kind of complement the Salem's gyro, gyro facility that's going up on the, up on the north side of the property. So our architectural style is something a little bit more creative and modern. And certainly, we feel is a compliment to the city. Our architects are here. If you do have further questions about that, that we can elaborate on. The second waiver is to reduce the required window transparency glazing along the facade from 25% to 11%. Your code requires 25% windows along the, the facades. And because this is a self-storage facility, it doesn't necessarily lend itself to, you know, having storefront-type windows. We've created windows along the frontage where we're proposing the professional business offices and we've created some faux-type windows to try and comply with your code. The third waiver is a waiver to the required 10-foot build-to line along Overlook Drive for the proposed western storage building. Your code requires that this building be, the, the new building be situated a maximum of 10 feet from Overlook Drive, a setback of 10 feet. We thought it was appropriate to offer an additional setback for buffer purposes along Overlook Drive. So we've, we've pushed that back to, to about 35 feet. A waiver is requested to reduce the required windows transparency glazing from 50% to 26% for the professional office use along the north elevation. From 50%, window requirement from 50% to 26% for the professional office portion of the project. Again, that's another section of the code that for office uses and retail uses that they require 50% glazing storefront windows. And so we're, we're asking to reduce that to 26%. Waivers requested to allow parking and loading in the front of the building as opposed to the side and rear of the building. And because of the situation of the existing building on the site, we've had to, we don't have access really to the, to the rear of the site for loading or any parking. There's not enough property. So the parking is, is situated in front of the building. Sixth waiver is a waiver to allow the existing driveway access from a primary street with a width of 36 feet as opposed to your code, which requires 30 feet. It's an existing driveway situation. We're using the existing driveway. We're not making any, you know, modifications to that location. So your code has a maximum width of 30 feet. We're asking to basically utilize, utilize the existing conditions of 36 feet. And the last waiver is a waiver to permit more than the maximum allowed parking. Your code states that no more parking shall be permitted on the site than what is permitted, the minimum permitted by code. We felt for the retail portion of the property that it might be a little bit appropriate to have more parking spaces than oftentimes is required by code. So we've asked to increase that slightly.
Just real quick question, and I'm not suggesting that you do this, but just, I just want to answer a question. Sometimes you'll see a parapet treatment that kind of gives you the feel of Mediterranean tile and stuff like that. Have you looked at any of those types of options?
Can we have our architect respond to that?
Have the architect come up.
Hi, I'm Fadi Garcia. I'm with Open Workshop Architecture and Design. So I want to talk a little, very briefly about the architecture and why we decided to go with the aesthetics. The existing, the existing building structure poses a lot of challenges in how to reuse the facade, also within a reasonable financial means for the, for the owner of the property. We identified a existing pattern to the building, which is where we're actually locating some, most of the window treatments in the building. We're also respecting the existing height of the building with the, with the exception of the tower in the center. Again, as, as you know, the property, this building is set quite far back. So having some sort of visual cue is, is important. In terms of the, the detailing of the building, we thought it would be kind of wasteful to bring elements like column and cornices and things that didn't have an actual functional use to the building. Instead, what we did was we draw from the surrounding areas and the materiality of the building, which is why we're bringing some brick. We could do things, we're doing things with the, with the stucco detailing as well. And then it's probably not very relevant on the, on the rendering, but at the top, we are going to accentuate that parapet detailing to kind of speak a little bit more to the Mediterranean feel. So, and then again, the, the window detailing with the awnings and the steel. Again, that, that creates a little bit of depth in the building facade that it currently doesn't have. And it's, 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 you know, we're going the extra length on a building of this type to, again, create a facade that it's more attractive.
Thank you. On the self-storage portion of the project, is it anticipated that people would have 24-hour access to the facility? Or is that going to be limited to nine to five or?
We haven't limited hours. We have not discussed the hours of operation. I don't know if, if our developer might have some input on that, but.
Not 24/7?
It's not.
Okay, thank you. All right. Lastly, you've got a phased project there that includes office, retail, and restaurant. Do you have a, a schedule of the timing of these three phases? And before you answer, one of the reasons I ask is you guys have probably seen the progress or lack thereof of the gyro place. And I just want to hopefully make sure we don't repeat that.
Right.
So I think somebody just stood up that wants to address.
Come on.
This is the property owner.
We're currently negotiating with a number of people, several restaurants, a bank, insurance company. They all love it. It's great out parcels to be in the middle of Temple Terrace. I mean, there's a, once this moves forward, the activity level will probably jump quite a bit. And we're looking forward to putting a very nice-looking commercial building that blends in into the town very well.
What's your anticipated start of construction?
As fast as I can.
I appreciate that.
And it's financed.
Understood.
We have approval.
Are we talking about two years or 10 years?
Two years or less. I, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping to be turning dirt up there maybe in six, seven months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Are there any other questions from council members? Councilman Donahue?
Yeah, I have a question about, I want to, thank you, about taking care of the neighbors. Because I drove that street today looking to see how close it was to the existing residential and the cemetery that sits right behind it.
Right.
So.
There's also a grand oak along Overlook Drive that, you know, that will stay in place. That also serves as an additional buffer.
Each of the places you actually, with the exception of the window transparency, you've actually increased rather than decreased.
From what is there today, correct?
Right, so you've increased the, the build line and, and things like that. But I guess my question is, it says that you have commercial and, and Mr. Charles alluded to insurance companies and things. But each of the buildings on the conceptual plan say self-storage. So of, and, and looking at it, not that, but the one that we had been given, of that, is, is the commercial in, in the front of the building, is there sort of a corridor with, with?
This is the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
So this is the existing building, which will be converted to self-storage. Over here next, Overlook Drive is the, the proposed new self-storage building.
Yes.
Up on the out parcel is the commercial parcel.
Okay.
I think she's also asking, we have a chunk in here
Yes.
that actually is going to probably be a little more than 2,500 feet. But it's going to be some commercial office spaces here in this area. Then the storage facility, office space two and bathrooms and stuff like that.
So it, the restaurant, so the green area is the commercial retail piece?
The out parcel.
The out parcel, okay. And you're thinking that's more than one establishment, is what you're saying?
Well, it depends on who comes in. A restaurant could come in and take the whole thing. A bank could come in and take part of it and then have some offices in the rest of it.
And that's, and that's what you're basing the parking on, is the additional park?
Oh, yeah. We have like 40-plus spaces for that.
And there's no drive-through there?
No, no.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions of council?
Councilman Boss?
I went through the waivers from his point of view. I just wanted to make sure from our staff's point of view that that's a fairly accurate, since we have a fairly accurate reflection of what the waivers would go ahead and dictate.
Absolutely. After reviewing all the seven waivers, we did not find any adverse impact, okay, of this development. As some of you may know, he's basically complying on some of this waiver, like increasing the parking lot. Line of the building on the Overlook Drive, in excess of 10 feet, he's pushing the building further back. Architectural design, of course, is not compliant, but this is more of designing. And you have to remember, this is an overlay district downtown mixed-use. We created that overlay and adding additional requirement for, for more quality-type construction. But again, due to the nature of this building, which is a storage and a Spanish-style Mediterranean revival, does not work together very well, you know? So, and again, this is the area we have more requirement than typically we ask, you know? That's, that's basically. And we look at all these seven waivers, we didn't find any, again, impact, you know, as far as the zoning, the land use. And Planning Commission has, had reviewed this and they didn't came with any, again, reasoning and any justification not to approve it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Anisi.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions, Councilman Donahue?
You mentioned that the overlay had not been finalized. Somebody mentioned that you had worked with Mr. Hudson and that we had not actually voted on making that change. Would that not be another waiver? Is there something in that that changed of what our original CRA rules and regulations were that perhaps is changing? I mean, I, I don't know why it hasn't been brought to us for a vote.
Based on my understanding, back in 2001, I mean, City Manager can, you know, elaborate, overlay has been in place for redevelopment area. And again, that has been in effect, okay? So any modifications since then, I'm not aware of it. I'm not, again, you know, concordant with that, so.
Councilmember Donahue, I, I'll have to check. It is my recollection that we adopted that overlay district. That's as far as back as I can remember, but we can certainly verify that.
That would be very important.
It does lay out a condensed version of the old chapter 29 that went back to 2001 that Mr. Anisi references. But I do think that we have that overlay in place, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify. That is correct. Your code has a current overlay and these are waivers from sections of that overlay. What we were working with Marty Hudson was basically a revision to that overlay specific to the quadrants at 56th and Bush Boulevard.
Yes.
So that's what we were working with, was essentially a revision to that overlay district. So although a draft document was prepared amongst the people that attended the workshop, it didn't make it to you yet.
And thank, and that's my point. One of the rules and regulations of the original overlay, of the original ruling was that storage units would not be allowed. And that was exactly what we were working on, because I attended those workshops with you.
Correct.
To grant that, to, to bring that type of industry into the overlay district. So I want to make sure before we do this that we have all the proper requirements in place. And that if that has not been brought to us, it needs to be brought to us so that we can handle that piece of business and, and make sure that we don't go back on you later and say, oh, you know, we, we hadn't changed the rule. We're sorry. So.
Well, by, by virtue of the rezoning to the PD, you're approving the use within the PD.
Okay, all right. Glad, thank you.
Are there any other questions of council? Councilman Pagorlik?
I just want to clarify something. I just want to clarify something. And the, the owner came up and, and explained it, but I do want to say that if you look at Exhibit C of the conceptual plan document we received, you can see in each one of the phases that, at Phase 1A, that there is office self, office self-storage and office professional considered. And there's actually square footage is allowed for those types of units. So, it, that is in line with what he verbally stated. So that it's not just the out parcel. There's, there's also
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Other office-type units anticipated in the existing building as well. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any additional comments? Are there members of the public who would like to address council on this item?
Is that me?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Mr. Lepton?
I am not in, against this project in any way, shape, form, or fashion. But one of the things that was said a little while ago was that there are so many acres plus or minus. And I know that, can I ask, has there been a survey on this property now so that we know that the overlay that shows the property lines is accurate as it is? And my reason for asking that is that I own a piece of property adjacent to that. And Charles, it's for sale at a reduced price if you run into a problem with your parking on the project.
I'm going to note that.
Provided there's no restaurants going in on the out parcel, only banks. Now, I own 8745, wait, I'm 615 Herschel Drive, too, excuse me. But I own 8745 Overlook Drive, which joins this property by the east and the west. And the last time there was a survey done, probably was 50 years ago. One of the things that concerns me is, Charles is going to tell these people, you squeeze that thing to get every ounce you can for this property. And if there's a problem, where does Ralph Lepton's walls go? They're concrete walls. I don't know where the property lines is on our property. But I know that there's a huge oak on our property close to the south border and also a sewer line. And let's say that that wall has to go, and they've got to come on by property for whatever reason, unless Charles buys it. Who is going to pay for the removal of the tree after it dies? And who's going to replace my septic system? And I'm standing here to make sure that it's on the record. And that's really my biggest concern, is, is that personal thing, okay? So I thank you kindly, and go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Lepton. Are there other members of the public who would like to address?
Would Ralph like me to address the wall?
Mr. Charles?
You may, if you'd like, Charles. Okay.
The facts are, his wall is on my property. And I do have the survey showing that. However, when you look at our drawing, you'll notice that that wall of yours that's on my property, I've left it there.
You're a good man.
And you owe me dinner.
I will give you dinner.
Mr. Anisi?
Thank you. I would like to, you know, provide comment to Mr. Lepton. Absolutely, there has been land survey provided, and this is one of the documents we get at the beginning of any application, yes. Most updated land survey has been provided to us, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Anisi. We do have another resident wishing to speak on this, Candace Reed.
Hi again, don't worry, paying attention this time. 5410 River Hills Drive. Just a question about when we do eventually go through contracts with the retail portion, is it possible to at least maybe build the storage unit as their plan recommends and then have that third phase with the Mediterranean style? I think that's something that I'd be interested in. I like the way that it looks on the other side in the Publix Plaza. Same thing down on our end, the Windexy Plaza, what they're about to do over here. So I just wonder if that's something that can be considered.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Are there any other members of the public who would like to, to address this issue?
Jeff Meyer, 8727-13, 8727-29, 8727, Overlook Drive. Just want to clarify where I'm at. I hug the outside wall right next to the graveyard. I have a lot of dead people showing up. I live in front of it. It's nice and quiet. The wall that he's talking about, an extending pass, which we can't, I didn't get to see the whole picture down here. He said 35 feet. There's 15 feet in 1963 that was one that wasn't accounted for. But yet the 15 feet that was supposed to be plotted for the Branch Famis Cemetery was supposed to be plotted outside of things, so they built their fence opening right at the 15-feet mark. Well, that encumbers, I can't remember his name, forgot it. Excuse me?
Mike.
Mike's property, and it covers up every bit of the opening of the graveyard. Well, the city plotted that they couldn't land-lock these people in, and they put a monument within seven feet of the property line. So therefore, they actually illegally now have to use Mike's property to get on their property because they can't get into the graveyard. I've been killing up the graveyard for almost 60 years, 60 years. So we kind of know what's going on in our little neighborhood, okay? I don't understand, we're getting 35 feet away from the back property line? There should have been 35 feet away from the front or side. But what concerns me the most, and it concerned him Friday, is our traffic. Our traffic said it's not going to come on Overlook Drive. Yes, it will, because they keep using Overlook Drive to get around 56th Street. And Ralph experienced the past week, I call it, another death trap being happened, an accident at the end of the street. This has been going on for years and years and years. We can't stop the, the traffic, but we can stop the people that keep getting on our place. The problem we have with this site is they're going to have to cut a hole in that wall for access to emergency vehicles and access to the fire department. So who else is going to use that thing? We say nobody's going to use it, but they will. We know the access of everyone that's going to get in and out. They use the wall to hop the wall to get to the place or to cut across. We still have that problem. Even at the end of our street, we still have our crime, even though Chief's been working on it really hard, and I appreciate that. We still have the truck driver still driving our thing. She's finally got a name that we can yell and scream at this time and actually have something done. But the progress of this city is overlooked constantly because the residents don't stand up and say, no. I'm here to say, no. Stop playing with our neighborhood. Stop invading it and using it for some other thing. I don't like to be there, as Mel knows, she's on the back end of it. She hasn't lived enough time in the middle between us to put up with what we had to put up. And all this is, is another irritation. The other irritation is, are you going to move all those military men out of the graveyard and put them somewhere? They're all veterans in there. There's dead families in there, and the rest of them are veterans. Would you like to have to move your loved ones because of somebody moving up or beating the crap out of the wall that holds the sand in there? No, that's deplorable. Leave the veterans alone, leave our neighborhood alone the best you can. That's what I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address this? Mr. Anisi?
I would like to point out, the rear access is just for emergency vehicle, has a gate and has a knock box. So the only people have access to the back is the fire crew and fire department.
Thank you, Mr. Anisi. Is there anything further at this point that the applicant would like to say?
I'll just, I'll just add to that, that the rear access, as he, as he stated, was emergency access only. It, it doesn't go to any customer entrance or any other portion of the site. So there would be really no need for someone to go back there other than to a dead end. So, and we are about 20, I think it's about 25 feet from that southern property line abutting the cemetery property.
And we do understand correctly, it's a knock box, so no one would have access even if they wanted it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we will.
Tonight, we're voting on the rezoning. This will come before us again?
Yes, it's a first public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
At this point, we will close the public hearing. If the clerk would please read the title, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilman Chalera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of observations that I've noted as we were talking. First of all, I want to say thank you for looking and investing in our city. We hope, wish, and pray we get redevelopment. And then when we get redevelopment, we have people that want to knock it down and kick it out. Look at that bowling alley right now. And I can assure you that a public storage facility is going to generate much less traffic than a residential community. There is no access on, on overlook. I would ask a couple of questions. If the wall that's in place can be made as one of the conditions of approval, that it be remained? If it's taken down, it has to be replaced by, by the, the property owner so we don't end up with Mr. Lepton or whoever else is there saying, they took my wall down, we have a problem. Also, I'd like to ask that there be consideration given that this property allow cross-access with the two properties that Mr. Lepton is trying to sell this evening. That's joking. And there, there, and there's a liquor store that's on the corner for future development. I don't think the liquor store is going to want to go next door. Mr. Lepton's going to want to go next door. But I know within the CRA development, the city has always maintained the fact that they want to provide cross-access easements where people could go through this property, this property can go through this property. So we have that walkability. Because this is a perfect example of everybody saying, we have this vision of redevelopment. This is why 13 years have gone by and not much happens, because it's not realistic. And folks that are interested are coming saying, this is what we will do, guys. You saw the tax base went from 1.6 to $6 million. You want to make things happen in your city, that's what you have to do. Traffic on overlook would be minimized. There will be a, a wall there, and there'll be decorative trees to at least try to address what's there. But as a resident and as a leader of this community, I would welcome this proposed development over what's there any day of the week. They showed you pictures of that building, and, and I know the, I don't know if he's the current owner or past owner, you know, he's been a great guy, and he's been trying to sell this property. This is what we need. We have a developer sitting here that's looking at developing the southeast quadrant on the corner. We want to send the right message that we want to work with people coming into our city. People say, we're leaving Temple Terrace because nothing's happening. Well, it's time we start making things happen. So my, I have full support for this. I'd like to see it, but I'd like to also make sure that, you know, it's clear that there is not going to be any access traffic to this property aside from emergency vehicles. That be noted in the, the PD and the development agreement. And that wall is certainly a condition of approval, that if it's taken down, it will be replaced in the same condition. Because there's all kinds of laws, you get into adverse possession. If you maintain that property for over 20 years, it can revert to you. We don't want to even get into all that tonight. But the fact of the matter is, I think you guys have a very good relationship, and the goal is to try to enhance and improve our city so it's convenient for those that live here. So hopefully we can move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Chalera. And I would, I would echo the councilman's remarks. I've had the privilege of, of observing Mr. Charles' work in our region over the last 20 years, and integrity and quality and consistency is just a part of, of his trademark. So I, I like Councilman Chalera. I'm quite excited to have him venturing into Temple Terrace. With that said, I would ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 3.67 acres of property located on the south side of East Bush Boulevard and the east side of Overlook Drive and approximately 145 feet south of East Bush Boulevard and east of Overlook Drive with addressable locations of 8735 and 8739 Overlook Drive and 5309, 5311, and 5313 East Bush Boulevard from zoning classification CG Commercial General in Temple Terrace and R10 Single Family Residential in Temple Terrace to planned development with a conceptual plan for RZP 1715, providing for amendment of the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve RZP 17-15 on first reading? If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on March 6, 2018. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Chalera?
I just wouldn't know if there's any support of the council on the comments that I suggested as far as making the wall part of the PD. The applicant had agreed to it. That was one of the, the neighbors' concerns. And also just to assure that there will be, not be any other traffic to this, this project aside from emergency vehicles that have been stated.
I'm agreeing to it, but I'm not giving up ownership. I, I don't think that that should be your request.
I, I, I don't think the question was to give up ownership. I think the question was just to be able to maintain the wall that's in place. That's the only suggestion I was making.
But what happens years from now when somebody comes along, buys Ralph's property, and then decides to tear that wall down? That adversely affects me now.
Well, if you want to address the council, please come, well, she closed the public hearing. I was trying to address the concerns of...
Yeah, I'm good with it. I'm good with that.
Okay, all right, so, thank you.
Very, very good. Would you like to make a motion to that effect, Councilman Chalera?
I would just like to incorporate, I think staff heard the intent here. I want to simplify it, I don't want to make it complicated. Obviously, if that property gets redeveloped, things change, so be it. But if things remain the way they are, that wall is a condition of approval as long as the single-family residential stays in place. If that changes, the use changes, then that no longer applies.
And you have my personal, I, I'm not coming in here and starting to fight with Ralph for anything or the future owner of that property, even if it might be me, you never know.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. And as we understand it, Mr. Charles, the, the wall is on your property. So if a future owner comes in, you, you, you own the wall, so you're in good shape. Councilman Boss?
Just for, because we're doing a rezoning, is the, that the wall issue have to be included in that? Or can it be added on to for the second hearing, since we have to go to two hearings? So this way we have everything in writing?
It'll be shown on the drawing.
Rather than just throw it, throw it into the mix?
Yes, we could, this is a conceptual site, you know, approval. We will include Mr. Chalera's request and comment to the final site plan approval, and that will be coming before you for approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anisi. We have a first, a second. Do we have any further discussion, Mr. Ross?
I just have a quick comment, and I know this isn't what we're doing tonight, but I want to get this out there for the, for the owner to know. I happen to agree, I think Ms. Reed has an excellent idea. So when you're doing your concept for what you're calling the out parcel, I don't think the same justifications for a waiver to the Mediterranean revival architecture would apply because that's new, new construction. So just so you know that, and don't pour in $500,000 worth of drawing something. Because I, I for one probably won't support that because it's right out on Bush Boulevard, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Are there any other comments? We'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. We will now open the public hearing for the first public hearing. And first reading ordinance 1447 for the voluntary annexation of 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Avenue. Community Development Director Amir Anisi will present. Mr. Anisi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening again. Amir Anisi, Community Development Director. We have voluntary annexation 1801. The property address is 7134, 7142 East Fowler Ave. First public hearing. The owner applicant is Ramshaw Gas Station LLC. Applicant agent is Vertical Construction. The background information, as I stated... The background information, as I stated, the location is 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Ave. This is a voluntary annexation of two parcel into the City of Temple Terrace. The acre is 1.45. The existing use, we have two parcel. On the west parcel is a vacant land. On the east parcel, which is the value gas station, is corner of River Hills Drive and East Fowler. Existing zoning is Hillsborough County Commercial Neighborhood. The proposed zoning will be Commercial General, City of Temple Terrace. We will have the second public hearing and reading on March 6. Staff recommend council approval of ordinance 1447 for annexation of 7134 and 7142 East Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Anisi. Are there members of the public who would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, council members, do you have any questions? Councilman Boss.
I just wanted, this is the gas station that's there, and it's the wooded lot next to it before you get to the private club facility that used to be a bar.
Yes, sir. They're going to tear it down, they're going to make a mega gas station. So they're going to combine the two parcels together and build a bigger gas station.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? Councilman Donahue.
Can you elaborate on that?
Well, this is again, just the first phase, which is annexation. They have to go through the complan amendment, through the planning commission, and they have to come back again for rezoning. And of course, as we get more information as far as the site plan, we will bring it before you for the review and approval.
Okay.
Based on my information, again, 7-Eleven is buying the property and again, creating a bigger gas station, bigger pumps, and bigger, you know, a store, convenience store, so.
Okay, but tonight, we're only annexing?
Yes, this is part of the Hillsborough County, it's not in City of Temple Terrace. We're just annexing the land into the City of Temple Terrace.
And do you know why they prefer to annex into the City of Temple Terrace rather than stay with the county?
I'm not sure.
No?
Because we're amazing. Because we're amazing.
Yes.
Well, I agree.
I'm not sure.
Are there any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I think what Ms. Donahue might be alluding to, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, is recently during the Wawa's application, a neighbor there went ballistic. So there's currently a gas station here. So in order to avoid a firestorm, I'd like to know the answer as well. It's currently a gas station. If they want to tear down and build a more modern gas station, they have the right to do so. There's the right zoning in place for it because it's currently a gas station. I just don't want to get in a firefight where we annex it and then also they want to remodel, and then we say, "You can't do it."
Right.
But thanks for annexing. So I'd like to be transparent to all those involved. So based on what our, the way our city code reads...
Yes.
Just tell me, because I don't understand the way you understand it. Is if you currently have a gas station, and it's zoned for a gas station, and you tear the building down and you remodel it, you can come back with a new gas station?
Absolutely.
Is that correct?
As long as the zoning and the land use can allow you to do so. In this case, which is, is a current gas station. But county, sometimes they use different categories for zoning and land use than us.
Okay.
Like, right now, they say Commercial Neighborhood, and the parcel next to it, it says Residential. So we are bringing it to the City of Temple Terrace and converting all this to general commercial.
All right, I just want to be transparent. I knew where you were going.
Totally, it's going to be demoed completely and then rebuilt back a brand-new gas station with a bigger, yeah, space.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Anisi. Are there any other comments or questions? If the clerk would please read the ordinance.
In ordinance, annexing by voluntary petition, two parcels of real property totaling approximately 1.45 acres located at the northwest corner of East Fowler Avenue and River Hills Drive, 7134 and 7142 East Fowler Avenue, legally described in Exhibit A, attached hereto and made a part thereof, redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed area, providing for severability and effective date and repealing... Oh, did I just read that? Sorry, that's the same one I just read. No, that's the same one. Redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed area, providing for severability and effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading? If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, March 6, 2018.
Still moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Ross.
I just think it's important that the public understand because there will be pushback, and they'll say, "Oh, my goodness, you're going to build it." Because when there was talk of the Wawa, you're right, people were all up in arms. I think it's important for the public to understand that there really isn't much or anything the City of Temple Terrace can do to prevent this person from, as you said, demolishing their building and rebuilding a new gas station. If we don't annex it, they can still do this. So this is to our advantage in a couple of things, in that we get some say in the site plan this way, and we get the tax revenue from it. So this project can move forward, and there's really nothing we could do about it whether they annex or not. And I just think the public needs to understand that, so.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Are there any other comments? I'll call the question, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. We'll now open the first reading of an ordinance permitting the city manager to reside outside the city limits. City Attorney Pam Shoshon will give a brief explanation.
As you recall, there was discussion at the last city council meeting with regard to approving the city manager's contract. There was a provision within the contract that allowed Mr. Stevenson to not have to change his residence to within the city limits, but because it is addressed in our charter, the way to deal with that, and if there were more extreme measures or reasons to allow that, it can be done by city council and approved by the ordinance. And so that's what you have before you today. It sets forth the reasons why, within the ordinance, that the requirement should not be imposed. And that's what's before you today.
Thank you, Ms. Shoshon. Are there members of the public wishing to comment on this item?
Hi there, should I do my address again? Perfect. Only request, think the terms too long if we're going to let them live outside the city, especially with this, the paradigm development, and now whatever's going to go into bowling alley. I think maybe a year, two at the most. But I think three years is kind of a long stretch, considering both developers are ready to build. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Councilmember? Councilmember Donahue.
Thank you. I don't know whether we need to offer an apology to our new city attorney for holding her to living in the City of Temple Terrace or not, but it seems to me that we're not treating our two employees that we employ. We only employ three the same, and so I still have a tough time with this. I'm not going to ask you to comment, Ms. Shoshon. I do realize that there were some citizens who spoke in favor of us not holding Mr. Stevenson to that same as we expected our fire chief and our city attorney to do. But I still am concerned about that. And hopefully, over the next three years, Mr. Stevenson can convince me that I was wrong.
Thank you, councilwoman. Are there any other comments? I'd ask the clerk to please read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, permitting the city manager to reside outside the city limits for the duration of the present city manager contract, providing for complex and ineffective date.
If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading? If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, March 6.
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We'll call the vote, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Nay. Thank you, motion carries. Next, a resolution approving the execution of a purchase and sale agreement with Paragon Development. City Attorney Pam Shoshon will present.
I suppose that this has been a long time coming. This topic has been brought up at the last few city council meetings. We have been working with the purchaser's attorney diligently to come up with a contract for purchase that was... There wasn't really a lot of dissent. It's just making sure that all of the appropriate paragraphs are in there and that all of the bases are covered for both sides. So I apologize if this has taken a little bit longer than had been hoped for. But we do have a contract. It has been signed by the purchaser's representatives. Mr. Moon is here today. So I guess we could have him come forward if he wants to say anything, or if you have any questions of him first. But what's before you tonight is to simply vote to allow the city manager to sign on behalf of the city to sell the property.
Thank you very much. Are there members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Mr. Moon, would you like to address counsel this evening? Very good. Councilmembers, comments? Councilman Shalura.
I'd like to ask Mr. Moon a couple of questions, and then I want to ask our city attorney a question or two. Good evening, Mr. Moon, welcome to Temple Terrace. It's been a while.
Yes, thank you for having me back.
I was growing extremely frustrated. It's probably the longest working contract I've ever seen in my history of dealing with real estate investments. My question to you, sir, is this has been a burden to the city, obviously. And we certainly want to start off on the right foot. And I'm sure while this was going on, you weren't sitting on your hands. You've been out seeking tenants and investments and other opportunities.
Of course.
So my question to you is, since this has happened, are you willing to reduce some of the timelines that are in place? Because this has been about four months now, basically lost time on our dime.
I know where you're going, and I can address that. The short answer is, at this point, I'm not. Until you have a valid signed contract, I am a believer that you're not under contract. I had no rights to access your property. I did not have any protection to have myself or any of my consultants on the property, nor did you have protection for my consultants if somebody got hurt. So other than talking to my proposed tenants and doing some sketches, I have not cut anybody loose. I will do so as soon as the purchase and sale agreement is executed. And I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but as far as the length of time, it was about 70 days from our submitting the contract to get the first round of comments back. So it's not, the way I view this was, it was not any fault of mine, put it that way. If I were to blame, if I sat on the contract, I think there'd be some extenuating circumstances that I could look to reduce that timeframe. But that's my stance this evening.
Okay, I certainly appreciate the way you operate. And I know our city attorney at the time has told us that they were assisting your team with due diligence, and that's when I questioned, "Due diligence hasn't even begun yet." But I'm not here to argue...
I have your due diligence for what the city received previously.
Sir, I have your comments, I understand. I don't want to go through this exercise two or three more times, we've done it enough. I just want to make sure we have somebody that's reputable and that's going to be ethical and do what they say they're going to do. So thank you for your answer. My next question is to the city attorney. If this developer comes forward and doesn't do what he said he's going to do, like our last developer, and I'm not the lawyer, and I don't want to play the lawyer, what grounds do we have? They're showing three buildings. And if they come in and say, "We're not going to do this, we're going to do something totally different. We want to put up apartment," whatever the case may be, and then the property gets locked up in litigation, like we did the last time around. They promised us all this retail, then they wanted to bring multifamily and everything else. What protection have you provided us as councilmembers and citizens of this community know that we're not going to get in the same mess that we were in last time?
I can't guarantee you that they're going to do what they're supposed to do. I can't guarantee you that we would not have to sue them. Part of what was, part of what went into creating this long agreement is that we added things in here to try to make it very clear that the reason why you selected this purchaser to sell to them was in reliance on what they were presenting to you. And that I added into the whereas clauses. That's why the attachments are here at the back, is to, we repeated it within the contract that we were relying on this conceptual plan. So if it turns out that they do not do what they're supposed to do and that what they build is not substantially like the conceptual plan that's attached here, then that may turn into litigation. All we can do is hope that the contract itself will be reviewed by the court and weighted on our side. As far as some of the timelines, the contract that I first got from purchaser's attorney, the timelines were longer. Just about every timeline was longer than what you see in the final version of the contract. That was one of the things that I worked on with the city manager. I think he met with Mr. Moon then, and together, they agreed to reduce the original timelines that were in the contract that was presented to us.
Okay, well, that's a very long answer. But I'm just going to rely on your expertise and your knowledge of the law that you've provided us every precaution possible. I know you don't have a crystal ball, but I don't want to hear "we should've, would've, could've." I want to make sure that we've covered every angle if we go down that path. If I can turn your attention to Exhibit A on the conceptual plan, I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same project that's coming before us. Because you referenced, it speaks to the conceptual plan. My understanding is that the property that we're talking is the corner parcel, which would be the northwest corner where the old Burger King was, at 56 and Bush. Is that correct? Yes? Okay. I see a strip of parking lot that sits almost in front of the library. Just want to make sure that is not included in this, because then basically you have the whole frontage of Bullard Parkway. I just want a clear explanation because the conceptual plan that you alluded to, on this conceptual plan, it shows that parking lot. And then if you continue at the bottom of this legal exhibit that you guys have provided us, it doesn't show that on conceptual site plan. So which is it? Is it one or is it the other? Because I do not, I do not want to repeat what we went through before. This redevelopment needs to get off the ground, needs to move forward. And I want to make sure all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
If I may answer that question, Mr. Shalura. The sale of this property is only from the right-of-way at Bush Boulevard down to what we know as Main Street. It does not include the parking that you're talking about in front of the library. I think that was just a snapshot that was taken from an old existing site plan. But Mr. Moon is well aware that the parking that is shown here north of the pavilion is not part of this deal.
That's why I'm asking the question, sir. To have it on record, it wouldn't have a surprise.
And I apologize for not giving you some boundary lines. As we move, yeah, as we move forward, all that will disappear.
I'm trying to avoid any discrepancies, because I see two conceptual site plans. Our city attorney just alluded to a site plan, a conceptual plan. So I believe I knew what the answer was. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, because I don't want this to be a gotcha. I want this to be that we're on the same team, we're running together, and it's going to be a successful project for the developer and the city as a whole. That's the goal here, so.
Good question.
Thank you.
We will make sure that that gets straightened out when we start doing site plans and not conceptual stuff.
Thank you, City Manager Stevenson. Thank you, Councilman Shalura. Are there any other comments? If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement between the city and Paragon Development for the property located in... the city and Paragon Development for the property located in the southeast quadrant of the CRA identified in the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Very good. Motion carries. Welcome to Temple Terrace, and we look forward to partnering with you. Moving forward, a resolution approving the 2017-2018 interlocal agreement redistribution of enhanced 911 emergency telephone service fee revenues. Chief Ken Albano will explain. Chief?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Ken Albano, your police chief. Before you tonight, for your consideration and discussion, is a recommendation that the city council adopt a resolution approving the 2017-18 interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County and the city of Temple Terrace regarding the distribution of the enhanced 911 emergency telephone service fee revenues and its intended use. On January 11, 2018, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners approved the attachment in a local agreement that you have been provided whereby 106,100 of their overall budget appropriations from the enhanced 911 emergency telephone service fee funds may be dispersed to the city of Temple Terrace. These funds may only be used by the city for salaries, education and training of 911 call-takers and other authorized expenses as described in Florida Statute 365.172, subsection 10. In compliance... Subject to council approval and in compliance with the aforementioned Florida statute, $54,000 is recommended to be placed into account number 0011440521.1211 and to be used for authorized 911 call-taker salaries, and the remaining 52,100 will be placed into general fund restricted account number 1-0000-281.00-00, subaccount 911, and used as permissible for other 911-related costs. With that said, staff will stand for questions.
Seeing none, I'll ask if there are any members of the public who would like to comment on this item. Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the 2017-2018 interlocal agreement regarding the distribution of enhanced 911 emergency telephone service fee revenues.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Very good. Motion carries. Thank you, chief. Next on the agenda, the charter review committee's proposed charter revisions. The charter review committee did meet earlier today. Some items were identified for further discussion, so if acceptable, would entertain a motion to table this item to date certain of March 16, our next council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That item will be tabled. Next, we have a communication plan for proposed charter revisions, and Public Information Officer Greg Polly will present.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I understand... Oh, Greg Polly, Public Information Officer. I understand there's a lot of work yet to be done on working out the details of the amendments to the charter. I would like to try to get in front of this as early as possible and get our community engaged. I would like to present for council's consideration a multi-faceted plan to help ensure that the Temple Terrace community is well-informed about and invited to participate in the charter review process. This plan will engage our community through a variety of information-sharing avenues. If approved and with your direction, I can move forward with the following plan, such as a dedicated online web presence identified as the charter review webpage, complete with download resources, and step-by-step guide to the proposed revisions will be created. A video public service announcement will be created and uploaded to the city's YouTube channel. The video will be composed in a question-and-answer format describing the charter review process as well as explaining the proposed revisions and community participation opportunities. The video will be linked from the city's webpage, the charter review webpage, all of our social media platforms, and also looped in our government TV channel replay system. We will also create and distribute a series of news releases announcing all related meetings and inviting community participation. A message can also be added, or will also be added, to our city utility bills directing residents to the charter review webpage and the available downloadable resources. A newsprint ad will be published, similar to those utilized by the city clerk, announcing all relevant meetings and inviting community participation. Meetings will also be advertised on the city's social media platforms, the city's homepage, the charter revision page, and on the Temple Terrace government TV channels. Printed posters advertising all related meetings will be displayed in various locations around the city, at city facilities, to help promote community participation. The city will also schedule and host a town hall meeting and dedicate a portion of that meeting to receiving public comment and questions related to the proposed charter revisions. Additionally, the city will schedule and host an additional workshop to accept public comment and questions. We will invite real-time online questions and comments via the city's Facebook social media page. The real-time social media interaction will be moderated by the city's marketing and communications officer, Lori Hayes. Once the final language is worked out detailing the charter revisions for referendum, we will once again invite real-time online questions and comments via the city's Facebook page, and this will be shared during public hearings and televised meetings. This idea was one that I borrowed from Hillsborough County. They reported great success in using their social media interaction to engage their community in processes similar to this. And finally, printed flyers publicizing the entire process and promoting community participation will be distributed at various city facilities and published online for electronic download. Thank you, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Polly. Counsel, are there any questions? Councilman Donahue.
In December, I attended a Florida League of Cities workshop where they showed database and poll-driven processes, where they showed the difference in how to win a campaign and how not to. And of course, the city, the Florida League of Cities is campaigning, or, and that is the word that they encouraged us, never to use, not to campaign, that we have to educate the public and never say, "Vote yes, vote no." But basically, if you vote yes, this is what happens. If you vote no, this is what happens. There are some... The reason the league is so involved is that there are several items that are going to be presented on the same ballot that all of us should be paying attention to. Do you see any room for adding some of those initiatives to our information process? Or had you considered that... I mean, there are some other very important items that will be important, very important to us. So, you know, have you considered that? And have you reached out to the league for any of their tools that they may be able to? And if you haven't, I suggest that you do. It was pretty impressive. And my second question is, did we budget for this? Do we know that we have... I mean, you're talking about a video and a lot of web presence. I know we have two employees, and that's what you're going to be doing, I'm sure, for the next few months, but I don't know that I remember any discussion about this. You know, we were still in the discussion about charter review to begin with, so...
None of this publicity plan is budgeted. This all happened after our budget. We believe we have enough internal resources to get this done at a minimal cost. We may have some cost on advertising that we have no control over, but the rest of this, we can do this in-house. Whole purpose of this is to make sure that there is complete transparency when changing the charter that runs this city. So, we're well aware of that. We can certainly reach out to Florida League of Cities. I know Mr. Polly has reached out to Hillsborough that just went through this and kind of engaged them with what they did and what worked and what didn't work. As we speak, I'm writing down more things that we can do. We videotaped the workshop today. We can certainly post that on YouTube and make that available. So, this is kind of a... It morphs into other things that we can do. I think that our two employees have covered just about as many bases as they possibly can, but if you think of something else, be more than happy to incorporate it into the plan, so...
Thank you, Councilman Stevenson, and thank you, Greg and Lori, for your good and thorough work on this. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, just want to caution... And I like the plan. I think it's a great plan, but I just want to caution you and staff that we should be wary of putting the cart in front of the horse. We had some discussion earlier today about bucketizing some of the changes, and what I don't want to happen is to have information out there that says this is going to be on referendum and ends up not being because it's just a maintenance item. So, before we dig into the details and say, "This is what it's going to look like," let's find out what it's going to look like. I just don't... I guess I just want to be wary of putting the cart in front of the horse.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
I have a... This is a great plan. I can tell you, very well done, very orderly. Thank you for both for putting this together. But my question is, maybe I don't miss... Maybe I don't understand the process, but I believe that once we vote as the city council on the language that's to appear on the ballot, that's it. So, I'm not... I don't understand why, at that point, we're asking for all this public participation and input, because it's all set. Isn't the time for public participation and input like a month ago and maybe now? But once we vote on it, which we were supposed to do tonight, and it's delayed, but once it's voted on, I don't think we can change it. It's... That's what's going to be on the ballot. So, I don't know... I don't know that there's value... I mean, I'll take the heed if there's heat, but I don't know that there's value in sitting in front of a town hall meeting and listening to two hours of comment on something that we can't change at that point anyway.
Councilman Stevenson, or, excuse me, City Manager Stevenson.
Let me kind of explain the process here just a little bit. This publicity plan is from conception in town hall meetings and workshops and everything else, all the way through to explaining what's on the referendum, all right? If people have questions about the referendum, there are ordinances now that we will... Once we decide what the verbiage is, this council will have to go through a series of public hearings in order to get that noticed. You're absolutely right. Once you guys approve that ordinance and that referendum, that's what's going to be on that referendum on the ballot. That doesn't mean that we're not responsible for explaining that to the public, okay? We're not going to change anything. We're certainly not going to prejudice anyone's decision on the changes that this council wants to make. But in the same token, this is an ongoing process all the way up to the ballot. If somebody doesn't understand what's on the ballot, that's what this publicity plan is supposed to be doing as well.
Well, I understand that, but...
This is a requirement of this process.
I understand, and explaining and putting the information out is not what I'm asking about. I think you're missing what I'm saying. I get that. We can't... I mean, putting it out every opportunity we have, it's better to put it out more than enough so that people are like, "I got it, I got it, I got it." I understand that. But this is all filled with language about community participation opportunities and community input. How do you participate in the process when we've already got it locked down?
Most of this will happen before we bring the ordinances. Okay. That's good. We... No, we got time. Okay, we got time. If you remember correctly... Sorry. If you remember correctly, there was a phase of this process that was eliminated by the legislature. So, we've got some extra time in here. We will go back now. We put a timeline together several months ago. There you go. And we will try to update that as we go along, and I think we're to the point now. Now that we know, committee's got to get back together one more time, make a couple changes. We'll bring those changes back to you. Before we move forward with the creation of the ordinances, we'll be into the town hall and some of these other things that we need to kind of get out, so... I think we'll be okay.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the conceptual publicity plan for the proposed charter revision. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Again, thank you, Greg and Lori, for your work on this. New business, a proposed change to rules and regulations addressing complaints against the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. City Attorney Pam Shoshon and Human Resources Director Janet Bledsoe will present. Or, City Attorney Pam Shoshon.
Janet couldn't be here with us this evening, so I'm going to handle this myself. We are addressing Section 4 of the Rules and Regulations called Employment Practices, and we are making some changes to the section called Complaint Procedure. There are some other minor changes that are being made, some, basically some relettering of the sections and shifting them around, but based on discussion that had happened at several council meetings ago, we have created a section that provides for a procedure in case that complaint involves either the city manager, the city attorney, or the city clerk, and how that is going to be reported, and that it's reported to the mayor, and it states that the mayor will determine the appropriate manner in which to investigate the matter if necessary, and that this may include engagement of outside investigators who will provide all findings and conclusions to the mayor and city council, who will then determine the appropriate actions to ensure that any substantiated misconduct ceases. In creating this, I did consult with one of the attorneys who routinely would represent the city. Under our insurance plan, he handles employment litigation. I wanted to make sure that this was something that complied with what other agencies are doing. I did check with the Florida League of Cities first. I also, I think it was Plant City I called, just to see if they had something already in place, and the answer was no. So, we may be the first ones to have something, but this was something that they felt, that the attorney felt that he could work with in the event that there is such a situation that involves this particular circumstance.
Thank you, Ms. Shoshon. Are there members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'd ask for council member comments. Councilmember Donahue.
I always go first. Well, according to our charter, the mayor and council are not to get involved in administrative duties, so I'm a little concerned about passing this on to the position of the mayor. And absolutely, remember, when I say mayor, I'm not talking about Mel Herado. I'm talking about any mayor in the future. So, my suggestion would be that, I mean, it says right now, "The mayor will determine the appropriate manner in which to investigate if necessary." That seems like that puts a great burden on the mayor to make a decision on whether or not it should go further. And what I would... What I would rather see happen is that in the event that the improper conduct involves the city manager or the city clerk, that the employee should report the improper behavior to the city attorney, and that if it involves the city attorney, they should report it to the city manager with an additional comment that who will confer with council to determine the appropriate manner in which to investigate if necessary. Our own charter gives us the right to investigate as a council. So, you know, I kept looking at the charter, saying, "We have this ability to do this, and I really hate to see this fall on one person," because this doesn't indicate that the mayor would go any further, that that person would take on that responsibility. So, I'm concerned about that point, but I'm also concerned, and I called city manager today because they were underlined and not, you know, the way we got this, and he assured me that this was reflected in other parts of the city rules and regulations. But please, somebody tell me, this paragraph at the bottom, that the city may not be aware that the improper conduct is ongoing and it goes on. Where is that anywhere else? Is this new to only this section?
Yes. If it's underlined, it's a newly created verbiage, so it isn't anywhere else. It's added in. It's brand new.
Okay. So, this Section F, is it right? The new... It's the new Section F only pertains to handling a complaint... The new, it's the new section F, only pertains to handling a complaint of the council officers?
No, no. This is, this is general complaint procedure. And, but it now includes specifically, because the question did arise before, that since everybody except for the city clerk and the city attorney works for the city manager, who should somebody complain to?
Right.
And then we realized that the same thing would pretty much apply regarding the city attorney or the city clerk. We also didn't want to be investigating each other, frankly. It does not create a good working environment. So, but as you mentioned, you know, if it's the city attorney, you go to the city manager, city manager, you go to the city clerk or the city attorney. Practically speaking, if someone does report one of these employees to the mayor, then the mayor can certainly consult with any of those other three, and if she came to me and said there was a complaint against the city clerk, I would be guiding the mayor directly to, somebody to investigate. And in speaking again to the attorney who's represented us in the past, their law firm, if they're not, they themselves could provide someone to perform investigation, but he also mentioned that there are actually former human relations officers out there who are available to do investigations of this type, and he would probably recommend that we engage one of those people. That would be somebody that the city would then have to hire to perform the investigation. So nobody is anticipating with this that the mayor is actually going to start investigating, but it's somebody that, it's somebody of authority that an employee can go report to. And really, that was the main thing here, is that they have somebody to go to and not feel like, if the complaint is against the city manager, where do I go? Everybody works under the city manager. So.
I, I understand, and I, I hear your point, and I do remember that you said that before, that you did not want to be investigating each other, and, and so it makes sense for it to go to the mayor. Then in that case, I would really like to strike the words "if necessary," because I would want the matter to be investigated. Because the way it reads now, the mayor will determine the appropriate manner in which to investigate the matter if necessary. There needs to be some investigation, obviously, if someone brings forth a, and I don't mean a full-on, but, but there needs to be a discussion, maybe with, you know, the person who's filed a complaint, do they have someone else? I mean, it, it goes on down here that when somebody complains, that they need to include others involved, maybe witnesses, and it says all of this. But if you just say, if you just leave it, it, it means that, that they don't have to follow any of the other, I, I'm just concerned about that "if necessary."
You can certainly remove that.
There's someone ahead of you, I'm sorry. Councilman Ross.
It, it can, it can stay, it can go if necessary. My concern is that there should be additional section in here that's a new section, because the city manager has the authority to change the city rules and regulations at any time he wants by posting. So there should be, which is why we initially brought this up as a charter issue, which will get deflected to this. But it has to be a caveat, and there was, this can only be changed as a direction of council. That's all I would add to it.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
The city manager has the authority to change city rules and regulations at any point, at any time. There's a process that you have to go through, it's a posting process and other stuff. So this can be changed at any point by a city manager in the future to completely eliminate this section. Most of the time, we don't see city changes in city rules and regulations, so there would have to be some sort of caveat that this section can only be done by previous posting to council with council's authority. Because that's really the day of the operations of the council employees, not the city employees. That's just a technical thing in the way our rules work, so.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
But I'm going with everything else.
Councilman Ross.
Good, good point, Mr. Boss. Mrs. Donahue, respectfully, I would disagree about the removing the "if necessary" for a reason, though, not just because I like to disagree with you, but.
I just.
The, the mayor will determine the appropriate manner in which to investigate the matter if necessary. The reason I say that, having been involved in public management of employees for a long time, you don't know the nature of the complaint that you might get. And there could be a host of reasons why the mayor might say it's inappropriate to conduct an investigation. I can think of several of them right off the top of my head. One, it, it may be, first of all, basically, it may be frivolous. City manager took my parking space. Well, you know, we're not going to do that.
Yeah.
Two, it, it may be something, the behavior that's covered under a collective bargaining agreement, in which case the mayor launching an investigation would be inappropriate, depending on the wording of the collective bargaining agreement. Three, it could be somebody that's filed a complaint already with EEOC, that now they go file a separate complaint with the mayor, in which case the mayor's response would be, we don't do anything until after the EEOC makes a determin, so there's, there's a whole host of reasons why the mayor, at that point, might say it's inappropriate to launch an investigation. So I, I'm in favor of leaving the "if necessary" in there, not because I want the mayor to sweep things under the rug, but because there's a lot of reasons why it may be inappropriate to investigate. So I, I, I don't, I'm not in favor of taking that out, because if you just leave it at the mayor doing the investigation, we'll have people playing the mayor like a puppet.
Well, if I can disagree, it actually says the mayor will determine the appropriate manner in which to investigate the matter. That doesn't say that this is frivolous. I mean, if it's obviously frivolous, you know, I mean, it gives.
The, the mayor, but again, the, depending on the nature of the investigation, it could be something that the mayor says this belongs at EEOC, take your complaint there. Now, obviously, I have faith in our mayor and future mayors, that they're smart enough to consult with the attorney, or if not this attorney, then our employment attorney. But they're not going to just make this decision in a vacuum, knowing that they're liable for their decision too. So you, you have to leave some flexibility in here, because these situations are, are different. You know, it, it may be completely inappropriate for the mayor to launch an investigation, depending on what the nature is.
Okay. I guess my question is.
If I could, if I could ask you to, you've spoken several times on this item. Are there any other comments or questions on this? Okay, Councilman Donahue.
I guess my question is, at what point does it involve city council?
Does it?
This doesn't.
It states, it states here, this may include engagement of outside investigators who will provide all findings and conclusions to the mayor and city council, who will then determine the appropriate actions to ensure that any substantiated misconduct ceases. So if you have an, an outside investigator, they would have to report to council what their findings are, and their findings would say either we've investigated this thoroughly, and the complaint is unsubstantiated, or they'll say it is substantiated. If we hire a, a good investigator, I would think that you would ask them appropriate questions and decide whether their, their conclusion is correct or not correct.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Just the other problem with that, because I don't like being in the dark either, but you got to remember that we operate under the sunshine law in chapter 112, so.
I know.
You can't have, you know, think of the nature of some of these investigations. You can't have this all dragged out in the sunshine, so.
And I, I hear you, and I, I thank you for your expertise, because that, that's what I needed to hear, so I feel comfortable with that. So, but when I talked to the city manager today, he, he indicated that this was only, this, this section was only about the council's officers. So it, it is for all employees, this, this section, especially the part that continues on, the, the second paragraph that's highlighted?
Yes, this, this is a section that applies to all employees. The primary change, though, was to add that section in, because as was brought up, there was no place specific to make these kind of complaints to. So that's why it was created and added to the section that applies to all complaints.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions?
I don't know, my only question's going to be to call the question, but incorporate Mr. Boss's comments. I think that was from the Jerry Seaver era, where he wanted to do whatever he wanted to do. So if there's any changes to the rules and procedures, these come to council for a blessing. The city manager can suggest them or recommend them, but these come to council to get approved. But everything else, I mean, we're ready to, just need to move on.
Very good. So if acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the modifications to the rules and regulations establishing procedures for filing investigations and complaints against the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk, with the provision that any further changes in rules and regulations are brought to council.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're just talking about this section, not every change in rules and regulations. Just this particular section.
Thank you.
Just this particular section regarding this, not, not every section.
Yeah, I, I guess for clarification purposes, if we can make that change and add that verbiage in there to this section.
Right.
We're okay to move forward posting this, we've got some notice we got to get to employees.
And I would suggest that you, in the, the language you say the section number that you're referring to. That way it's.
We will leave that up to our cap, capable.
I'm sure you will.
We have a motion, we have a second. Calling the vote, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Motion carries, city managers report.
I have, I have a new, under new business, if I may.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bob, you go first.
Well, mine's more informative, but this weekend, aside from the farm night barbecue, will be the Hickory Hacka Golf Tournament at the country club, and on Monday will be the professional golf tournament, in which golfers from all around the country will participate in Hickory Golf as they enjoy our city and hopefully our hotels to give more money to the county in the tax revenue. It doesn't come back to us, but they'll be here, so you'll have, and if anybody watched Fox 13 or goes online this morning, they did a, about two hours of live shots from the country club, talking about the Hickory Tournament, so.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
It's probably a link to it.
Councilman Ross, Councilman Pogorla.
Thank you. It's with great pleasure, as your vice mayor, that I get to present this particular item. Since 1992, the Florida League of Cities has conducted the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials. This program is a three-day intense program, starting on Friday and ending on Sunday. Our own Mayor Mel Giorado attended this session on, on dates of January 19th through the 21st. I just want to quickly read to you some of the items that were introduced and discussed on, under this three-day, which goes from, by the way, from eight o'clock in the morning till 5:00 PM, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I'm sorry, into three o'clock on Sunday. Effective council techniques, structure and function of municipal government in Florida, public officials' liability, budgeting and accounting, understanding intergovernmental relations in Florida, Florida's ethics laws, and how to comply with public meetings and public records laws. Again, our own Mayor Mel Giorado attended this, and I, I for one am thankful, as he's certainly going to serve our city much better than she already has been doing as a result of this. And again, it's with great pleasure, as the Vice Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, that I present you with the certificate of completion for the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilman Chalera.
Unless you got to say something, I'd like to say something, something, a different topic, once you get done.
Councilman Chalera.
I wanted to bring some to the attention of the council, that I've, the last couple of days, I've come across a couple of folks at passing, as you can tell, at the, the last meeting, there was some frustration with our financial consultant, that he was only going to one bank. And since then, after our meeting, he was open to talking to different banks. So in my course of running around town, I gave some of these folks a heads up, say, you're going to be contacted, you're going to be contacted. And I've come across a couple of the banks over the last couple of days, and like, Frank, it's, the, the timeframe is too small. You're expecting us to finance $23 million, and you're giving us like 10 or 12 days to come up with it. He goes, we're very interested, and it's Republic and Pilot, both banks, but the timeline is way too small. We would ask that you please try to relate this information to your council and provide more time for a response to this RFP. There's information they've, he said, one of the guys told me, this is information we've requested, we're still waiting for. This is a big deal, it's not a couple of thousand dollars, I mean, it's 23 million bucks. So, and I want to make sure we can provide, you know, our residents options that come before. So I know last time, the gentleman got up here and said, PNC's the only game in town, and if we bid it out, PNC's uninterested, but in you all recall, he said, well, we're going to go ahead and bid it out with a few different people, and then if that don't work, we're just going to go back to PNC. And I just sat here, was dumbfounded, like, you just said one thing, now you're saying another. But having said that, my goal is to provide different options, and not one bank, but both banks have expressed concerns with the timeline being too small. And, and I think, you know, redevelopment is the most important thing in this city right now. It's been for some time. It's one of the biggest financial constraints, and to rush something, I mean, if you, normally an RFP is 30 days. If any of you guys have ever applied for a loan, you don't get an answer in 10 days. So they were just asking for consideration, and many of you know these people. Please re, I told them, I said, any questions you have, I can answer them, contact the consultant directly, because I don't want to get in the middle of it. But just in passing, I said, you know, you guys all right? Yeah, yeah. Because we just, it's, it's too small of a window. We're very interested, it's just too small of a window. So I'm just asking this council to, to possibly, since this was brought to us with such a short window, that we ask our, our city manager to see if we can direct this financial consultant to extend this timeline, to give them more time, instead of the, this coming to us at the first week of March, maybe it'd be the second week of March, or call a special meeting. It's worth, I mean, they were talking, based on what he told us, the difference in interest rate was substantial. And you're going to be including principal and interest this time. So that, that's, that's, that's going to be a, a big eye-opener when it comes around to, to budget time, that, that month, that annual payment has certainly changed. But I'm just relaying the information that was brought to me. I would, you know, I would be in support of providing, you know, more time, but I'm just one person, so I wanted to bring that to the attention of this council, if that's an important item.
Thank you, Councilman Chalera. I would ask City Manager Stevenson, I don't know if you have a response now, or if you'd like to reach out to our consultant on that.
Yeah, I, I, I would probably ask that, let me reach out to Mr. Glover and see what we can do. If we've got interest from other banks, I, I know that, I read an email from him today, that was asking some information, Republic reached out to him and was asking some questions, maybe seven, eight questions that we probably need to respond to, that would certainly affect whether or not they respond to the RFP. But if council wants to, to extend this for a, for a predetermined time, I, let me, let me, let me reach out to him, before I start saying too much. I mean, we, we are on a short window here. It is my understanding that, and I have not seen the documents or reviewed the documents as of yet, but PNC has offered a 60-day extension on the, on the due date of the loan, so that may give us some additional time to work with, but let me get with Mr. Glover before I make a commitment to that.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Councilman Pogorla.
Councilman Don, you're good.
Go ahead.
Okay. I, I think we owe it to the citizens, we have a fiduciary responsibility to try to get the best deal we can on everything, including $23 million. I just, my question is, did, Mr. Chalera, did they give you any indication of what would be, is it a week they need? Is it two weeks?
The gentleman had expressed, the gentleman from Republic said, normally an RFP is 30 to 45 days.
Yeah.
He goes, we have, we have, you know, 10, a little over 10 days to put this together. He goes, I mean, we're talking 23 million dollars here.
Yeah, I don't know if we can give them, with the extension that we've now got, is what?
We don't have that much time.
Do we, how much time do we have? If we get, could we?
April 1st.
Is it, is it possible to give them two weeks?
I thought he was going to give them.
No, 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 two weeks more.
I think it would be helpful, in my opinion, based on what I heard, if not, he. I think it would be helpful, in my opinion, based on what I heard, if not, the financial consultant said, the first week of March, you'd bring it to us.
Yeah, Mike.
The first week of March, you would bring it to us, make it our second meeting of March, instead of our first meeting of March, whatever the timeline is, that might give them an extra 10 days, and I would hope that if they're that interested, they can hustle and make that happen.
Fine with me.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not asking for, you know, give them 30 days or 45 days, but maybe extend it to one extra meeting, so that gives them an extra 10 days or 12 days.
Thank you, Councilman Chalera. Is there any other new business?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm good with that also, and I'm also good for scheduling a special meeting, if we have to, and fit one in there.
Thank you, Councilman Boss. City managers report, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've got a few things here to go through. Touch a Truck was last weekend, was a huge success. I think everybody, probably in his room, attended, thanks to Carl, and Phil Jeter in particular, who worked really hard to get that thing put together, and please extend our gratitude to Phil. This Friday, he was mentioning this, is Farm Night Friday, I'm sure everybody ought to get their tickets early, because they do have a limited amount of tickets. We were able this week to recover the $8,000 on the demo on the River Hills house. We got a check from one of the companies that we were dealing with, and reimbursed us for that cost, so the house came down without any cost, other than what we had, and therefore, several years of processing stuff, so we did pretty good with that.
Reimbursed us.
There was a safeguard, Lynn, what was the name of that company? I can't remember either, I can certainly send it to you in the update this Friday, but it was a company that was working to mitigate some of these problems that we were We were also able this week to collect on a $25,000 lien, on a foreclosed house on 113th Avenue. That is something that our city attorney worked very hard at. Last week, we had some one-on-one meetings with each of you, concerning communication, and I can tell you that there was about six different forms and meetings of communicating between council and city manager. We will try our best to get each of you the information that you're looking for. If you get information from me, that you say, what in the world, is he giving me this for, I understand that someone has asked for this information, and I'm passing on to everybody, whatever information I give to one, I try to give to every single one of you. We have a situation coming up, that we're going to need to try to schedule a shade meeting with council, concerning the McKnight litigation, if I can get everybody to look at maybe their calendars. We can probably do this in about 30 minutes. You'll be all right with that? About 30 minutes, we do have our next meeting, there is a shade meeting, or not a shade meeting, I'm sorry, but a CRA meeting, which is just an update, if we can do it then, that would be super. I don't know that I need, with what's happening with the CRA, certainly, I think everybody is well aware of the status of things. So, if we can kind of keep that at 5:00, I think if we can split at 5:00, do a shade meeting, 5:30, do a CRA meeting, we'll advertise it accordingly.
The last time we had a 30-minute CRA meeting, we went way over. Do you really think 30 minutes is enough for CRA?
I tell you to be totally honest with you, Ms. Donahue, I don't know that we have that much to share with you.
Okay.
I mean, we know what's happening with Mr. Moon, we'll certainly get this going, we're excited that we're at this point, we're looking forward to more. So, we're not going to let him sit on his hands anymore, that he's going to let me sit on my hands. We've agreed that we're moving this thing forward, so I don't know that we really have a requirement by statute to have so many meetings, so many CRA meetings a year, this would help satisfy that requirement. I do think that 30 minutes on the CRA would probably kind of give us just a quick update on where I'm going with CRA and some of these other parcels. We do have some stuff that is happening with us as well, so I think 30 minutes will work. 30 minutes on the shade meeting, I think will be sufficient to kind of let council know our suggested moves here, so.
For the shade meeting, do we have to do the official motion to hold the shade meeting in accordance with the whatever statutes for the McKnight litigation?
We would have to have a motion to have that shade meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion around that?
Hi.
Madam Mayor, that's-
I thought you were calling the vote.
I'm sorry.
Did you have something to say?
I've got a couple of other things.
Before we call the vote?
We're just voting on the shade meeting.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second to hold a shade meeting at 5:00 on March 6th, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Couple of other things, as you guys may have come in here, in the front door, you may have noticed a big old piece of equipment out front, is it still there? You noticed it on the way out. It is our newest addition to our Public Works Division, it's a brand-new vac truck, something that we have needed desperately. Every time we needed to clear a line or jet a line, we had to rent in a piece of equipment, because our equipment was not either functioning properly, or not roadworthy. So, if you do take a few minutes to kind of look over that, Nate will hang around and kind of tell you what it's for, but basically and primarily just for sewer lines and storm drains. It's a good piece of equipment, and it's unbelievable that we've functioned as long as we have without it, but we've managed. So, we do now have a brand-new piece of equipment that he's going to take very good care of, and make sure that the maintenance stays on board, so that we have this piece of equipment, we have to have this piece of equipment. One last thing, and I'll ask Mr. Troy Tinch to come up to the podium. Troy and I signed an agreement today for him to come on board, as our new Public Works Director of Utilities. He will be handling the water, the sewer, storm drains, our natural resources, and our street division, and helping Nate with the administrative end of those things. We've got a lot of projects we've got to get done, and Troy's got to do that. So, Mr. Tinch's first stay with us is March 5th, but we had a meeting today, and I showed him around a little bit, and I just asked him if he could stay over and introduce himself to council, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, Your Honorable Mayor, city commissioners. As Charles indicated, I have accepted the position as the new Public Works Director over utilities. I'm extremely excited about being on board. A little background about myself, I have roughly 20 years, or a little over 20 years of experience in both the private and public sectors. Again, I'm excited to have the opportunity to work with Charles and the team, to continue to move the city forward. I think we're headed in the right direction, and I'm happy to be part of that. That said, I'll stand for questions, if you have any.
I have a comment, and I've shared this with our city manager, and I've shared it with you as well, and I'd just like to share with my fellow council members. During my day gig, I happened to be spending a day in a municipality, and of the cities and counties and municipalities I've been a part of, I happened to be with Troy, as he announced to his leadership team, that he was officially stepping away. I have never heard, and over the next three days, I was doing work in various departments, I have never witnessed such a prolonged heartfelt praise of a leader. I was a little concerned when the police department shared with me, they had guns, and weren't sure they, weren't sure they wanted Troy to leave, but this is a man that I've heard described as high integrity, very tenacious, a team builder, a can-do attitude, and an absolute delight to be around. So, we have acquired a champion, so I thank city manager Stevenson for recruiting, I thank you for joining us, and I'm delighted that your commute is shorter, and I'm delighted that you're a part of our team.
Thank you, and on my side, I am a longstanding city resident. So, thank you.
Thank you, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Is there any further business to come before the council?
I have a couple of questions of city manager. Last meeting, we were talking about the Innovation Alliance, and so tonight, I brought schedules of all of the future meetings. Remember, this is the advisory council, I'm only attending the advisory council, but I wanted to know if city manager was able to schedule a meeting with either Mark Sharp. I know the leadership team has said that they're willing to come, but you had indicated you wanted Mr. Sharp himself, so I didn't know if you-
I spoke with Mr. Sharp a week before last, and he couldn't make this meeting, but he has assured me that he will try to make the next meeting, and do a presentation to kind of bring everybody up to speed with what the innovation place, I think they call themselves now.
No, they can't call it that, they're calling it, what does it say on the paper?
They had a problem with that one, too? I know they've had problems with management.
Yeah, they had a little cease and desist order thing going on there.
Okay, well, innovation, we'll call them innovation for the time being.
And then, I know we're all ready to go home, but can you please address Mr. Noonan's concern about the, I mean, I don't know that I want the checking balance put on the website, but is there a way for the information that was shared with us to be either put on the website, or-
Absolutely.
Last month, his question was that we had been handed the-
Is it there?
The financials, and so I just would like, he's not here, but he said he would be watching on television, so.
It's unfortunate that he's not here. All of the information that he mentioned is already on the website, and has been there for quite some time.
Okay.
We have an archive from our homepage, that archives all agendas and important documents. Within that archive, there is a consolidated subarchive of all financial reports, it's budgets, it's CAFERS, it's quarterly reports, it's all there.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I did not get a chance to speak to him before he left, but I can assure you, that information is all available, and it's available to the public at all times.
Thank you very much.
If I may add to that, if they're not tech savvy, they don't have a computer, they can go to the city clerk's office and get the same thing.
Thank you very much, Councilman Chalera.
Thank you, and I just want to acknowledge, I want to state to the city manager, thank you for giving us the update the other day with the incident at CVS, it's very helpful, because people call and say, what's going on? That was great, when attempted carjacking, whatever it was, when the police chief sent that out, that was great. Also, if, when you become aware of it, if you can give us heads up, maybe you know, you don't know, I don't know, the church that CVS was going to go to, it's under contract being sold, I don't know what's going there, I know it's county, but it's right at our front door. Cafe Don Jose, I understand, sold, if you hear something going on, let us know. GT's getting ready to do something, I saw a bunch of black stuff around there, and that's in the redevelopment, I don't know if they're remodeling what they're doing. And lastly, the redevelopment, are the brokers still working, marketing the property, what, where are we at with the?
They are, they are actively still seeking tenants and developers for us.
Okay. Nothing's come out of it, though, no?
No, nothing's come out of it, I know they've had a bunch of discussions, and again, I'll try to kind of update you guys a little bit, what's happening at this next CRA meeting.
I think once you-
They are still actively pursuing developers, though.
This certainly will assist us when this public storage place takes off, the old Scotty Shopping Center is under extensive renovations, there's also a Wawa's going up right across the street from that, for those of you that don't know, they just bought the whole block. And once the development at the southeast quadrant takes off, I think it's going to start sparking a lot of attention, because folks in the community are like, when is this ever going to happen? So, I think it'd be great to get something going. Thank you.
I believe we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Councilman Chalera, thank you, city manager, we will stand adjourned.